Restart.
Restart.
We can't restart it, we'll put it on a different.
Yeah.
Can't restart it, we'll put it on a different.
Oh, you'll put it like on older.
That one's a two year.
That's it, yeah. All right, we're ready?
Yes.
Prove the agenda.
Or we're gonna let Jason go.
You're back in open session of the city.
Yep, we are.
City discussed some real estate negotiation strategy. This one time entered the motion table, that to another meeting.
Yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Well, I can't make a motion.
Aye.
I already made the motion.
He made the motion.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
None for me. There are none on my motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. Clinton?
All right, you have the minutes from the February 28th meeting, our last council meeting. You also have the revenues from the last couple of weeks as well as the expenditures. I was just gonna point out a couple expenditures. Andrea may have some additional ones here. On the first page of our payables, we do have the invoice to ABDO for the partial audit that we have done so far. So you'll see part of that invoice for this year's audit. A little ways down the page there, there is some expenses for the 2022 street utility improvements, you know, the opening the bids and tallying the bids and things like that. So that all had some cost to it. I think that's it. Did you have anything, Andrea?
No.
Any questions on any of them?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public forum. Anyone here wish to speak through public forum? Ron?
Ron Brier, 115 West North Street. Approximately seventeen years ago, my wife Susan and I moved to Janesville because of close proximity of Mancato, easy access, nice road, stuff like that. Over this course of those seventeen years, many times we've been forced, and I'm stressed, forced, to pay taxes to keep the golf course open. But one thing about, we had the advantage of, we only had to pay once. If you had a house and a business, you had to pay twice. And then you still had to pay full membership fees. And over the course of that time also, if you were out of town, so many miles out of town, you got like a ten percent one-year discount on your memberships. And I feel that's not treating the citizens of Janesville properly. The reason I'm bringing this up is that seventeen years, many times the golf course ended up short of funds. And it was never a problem to find those funds to make up the loss to the golf course. Also during that course of time, there was some things that were turned down because the city said they didn't have funds. One was the pavilion at the park. Another was when the frisbee golf was brought up. And that was, it was proved at that time to do it as long as it didn't cost the city nothing. And now comes citywide cleanup. And I think I read it in the paper wrong because it said like $2,000 or $4,000 difference in the cost from having it here to having it curbside? Is that correct or...? That's the way the paper stated.
Ah, the paper misprinted there a little. It's all based on, it's based on tonnage and we don't have an answer because we don't know how many tons there's gonna be.
Right, I understand that. But the reason I'm wondering this is we've always had money for the golf course. Now something that would benefit the entire city of Janesville, all the citizens, not just some of them. And we can't have, we can't afford to have the citywide curbside. Last time they had the citywide cleanup, they had it here in the parking lot. And I noticed so many usable items getting crushed in the garbage. That normally if they'd been set out on the curb, people would have picked them up. People could use them. There's people that, our times are tough, couches, chairs, tables, all kinds of good stuff. And a lot of recyclables are going in there too, which I didn't think was very, very good for the ecology type thing. So I just would like the council to take in consideration all, what's best for all the citizens and maybe go out and ask them, hey, is it okay to spend a few extra dollars for it? I think, I think that the, I find the lack of communications between the city and the citizens is not, not all there. And I, I think it should, people should, and the council should ask the citizens, hey, what do you want? Take some input from the city.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else for public forum? Public forum? Moving along. Those in communications?
I do not have anything to say for you.
Council reports?
We have a golf course board meeting scheduled for March 30th at 5:30. So we'll be getting together with the, with the board and seeing if they got any projects they want. Stuff like that.
John?
Maybe Nate, you're new on this one tonight, so he's got the rundown. He could give you a couple of things that they can offer.
Jim, anything?
Nope. Thursday we meet.
Okay. We have a little update on the pavilion project. We did, for those of you who are unaware, we do have the pavilion. It's purchased and it's here. We've been working with Jim Jewison, a local contractor, on an estimate as far as the installation of the pavilion as well as the footings and the concrete and stuff. So we do have an estimate on that, which I just gave to you two minutes before the meeting. So it's just a small update, but we'll keep you posted on that. And I thank you, Jim, for getting this done. We will definitely stay in touch with you on it. Well, see, have any council stuff or?
Uh, no.
We have VDA next week?
Yep, they meet up soon, so.
Okay.
Administrator reports?
All right, in your packet, we have the February reconciliation from the bank. You have the cash balance report dated last Friday. On the golf course comparisons are in that packet as well. We did receive the contract for the mosquito control that we do every summer. I always like just to let the city council know when it came in. And I do have, Joe and I do have one question for you. There is a 5% increase from last year, however, every other year they increase by 5%. So last year's cost was the same as the previous year, you know. The 5% cost increase really didn't make a significant difference in the contract. We have used Clark mosquito control since 2008. They do a great job. Residents, you know, like it and they thank us for doing that. So I suggest we consider staying with them. Another question that Joe Zimki and I would have for you is, would you like me to contact Clark and ask them to spray Lakeview Park when they do the community as well? Eight times a year. It's like $50 or $60 more each time.
I think that's good.
With the new golf courses out there, if we're trying to ramp people up using that park, it sure would help.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I will get in contact with them. Housing study. As we reported to you last, last meeting, Marley met with the Minnesota Housing Partnership staff. She completed an application to become a member of the housing partnership. Found out today that we went through another step with that, so we're getting closer to that membership. Once we become a member, we can apply for a grant that could possibly pay for up to 50% of our housing study. So Marley has another couple phone calls scheduled this week, I think, with them, right? This all came out like at 3 o'clock today. So we're moving ahead with that, so that's that report. Andy mentioned the golf advisory will meet on the 30th. The other thing I have is Andrea and I had signed up for a webinar to attend to learn and to get more familiar with the reports that we have to send to the U.S. Treasury now with our American Rescue Plan money. Found out late last week that that webinar was canceled due to some technical difficulties or whatever. Andrea just found out today that it's on again. So next Monday, March 21st, we're gonna be sitting in on that webinar. And the only reason I mention that is because I would really like to sit in on that webinar to learn a little bit more about this reporting because the 47-page guidelines, I haven't quite read all of it yet. It's really fun reading. Do you wanna bring it over and read it? But yes, at a future council meeting, we'll definitely be talking about the Rescue Plan money. I just wanna get a better handle on the reporting stuff with it, so.
Yes. We can't pass a resolution, we'll put that in general funding, but you don't know what you're doing.
No, I didn't have.
We'll have a discussion. We can take care of that separate part. Basically, the feds, and this is something that just came out between the past thirty days. The feds passed a regulation that essentially says you can convert that, the entirety of those funds, to lost revenue. And all you get, all you get is a resolution. And then you move those funds forward.
Okay, well, we'll talk.
We'll have a chat.
Yep.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, yeah. And the only other thing I have, I will not be here Thursday. I have a board meeting in St. Paul, so I will not be here Thursday. That's all I have for administrator report.
Very good. Motion to approve the administrator report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Full business.
No, that department has.
Move department heads, yep. Nate?
Well, quarter B.
Yes.
Um, guess we're gonna be a new requirement that we're gonna be here, what is it, quarterly now, Clint?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll kinda give you a once-over instead of a thorough follow-up to whatever council representative is on. This year, we got several open capital improvement projects in both water and electric. They're gonna continue on. We got AMI projects going. We got stuff with power plant going that we didn't get parts into December on. Tonight, the utility board also approved another capital project not to exceed a amount of $95,000. It'll lead to better quality for Northwoods with some updates to JDP schools going as far as increasing their load. I guess any questions for me since I'm standing here, so.
Is there anything the council can do for you?
Nope.
Wonderful. Thanks, Nate. Safe routes to school discussion.
Okay, council, you want a specific discussion or? Or do you want me, I did, I did look into Dylan's suggestion a couple of weeks ago about the ditch. Talk about that or if you guys wanna?
I would like to hear that.
Okay. How big's your checkbook?
Fairly good size, but I'm not giving it to you.
Oh, okay. Honest guy. Talked to a few different county employees and also Commissioner Dean Alter reached out. If we do move that ditch, it's gonna take quite a bit of work as far as, you know, legal fees if needed. I don't know how much that would cost, but we'll need to work with a couple of different county departments, the DNR out of the Waterville office. And Dee sits on the ditch committee, I think it's called. I can't remember what it's called. As a commissioner, she did say it is quite the process to do that. So is that an option you want me to pursue? If you, if you would like me to do that, I certainly will. I just need some direction from you tonight on that. That's all I have for the.
I also did reach out to the property owners again, seeing if there's any chance they had changed their mind and wanted to work with us and they still know.
I think it's worth exploring every avenue possible. So.
Two questions.
Go ahead, Jim.
Two questions. First of all, when does our project have to be done? Is there a timeline on this or not? Or are we open-ended? Do we go out a couple of years of it?
The best answer I can give you, Jim, is the local match between the city and school has to be spent this year. The project needs to start this year. I did get an email late last week that said the expenditures from the local level could go into 2023. I think they're allowing that because we're already in March. We don't even have bids out. So we would start very, very late in the process. My concern with that is we have 2022 money to spend. We can't look forward to spending it next year if we budget it for it this year.
What would happen if we didn't spend it this year? What happens to it?
I'd have to check with Jason on that. I'm not, I'm not so not sure. No, can't use safe route grant money to, for other.
Not part of this. We weren't doing any streets with safe routes. We were doing some sidewalks, not streets.
What would be the timeframe that the county thought that they could end the national or?
DNR.
DNR. What timeframe would they need to?
I honestly don't know because I learned all this late last week and I, I need you guys to give me direction. Because you see what I'm getting at?
Well, I'm thinking if it only takes six months and we can finish, we can start the construction this year and finish it next year. We still have a timeframe to fit within that. If we had to get it completed this year, then we're pretty short. But I would guess between the county and the DNR and things, six months would probably be a reasonable number, but I'm not positive. John worked with DNR more than I do with the ditches that you guys clean and things. It'd be worth pursuing to see what their timeframe would be. And if we could fit it within our allowable time for construction, we can still pursue it, take care of the residents there, get it built in a timely fashion and everybody would be cool with it. I would like to pursue that information for timeframes.
I would too.
I did have one more option I thought of, and I don't know if anybody has any interest in it, but it appears like the concern of the residents is safety, correct? Well. Safety's one concern, the 35 feet, that's where property mine is. It would be as simple as running a chain link fence along it behind all the properties.
We had talked about that when I first met with Joe.
We're not asking you to. I'm saying we could put it up along.
I.
Go ahead.
It would almost feel like a slap in the face to turn around and look every day at a chain link fence where your yard used to extend. So I'd like the idea that it would create more safety, but I can see the animosity of the residents and why. If I turned around and looked at where my property used to be and saw a chain link fence, I wouldn't be very happy every day.
That actually isn't where their property used to be though.
If I may.
This is council discussion. Public forum's over.
If I may speak again.
You may.
I don't think that we're trying to argue the technicalities. When you look in your backyard, you look at what you see. I mean, if there could be a tree 40, 50 feet off, it's still what you look at. I wouldn't wanna look at the chain link fence regardless if that was technically able to be used for city. You gotta think of it from the beginning. These are residents that were not involved in the process from the beginning. That's why there's so much animosity. I would rather explore the options Clinton and Jim have discussed before we even think about a chain link fence, which would just, it really would feel like, if it was me, it would feel like a slap in the face every day. Especially when we were arguing that money was an issue. But we'll put up the funds for that. That's just my opinion.
Clinton, at this point, it seems like the council would like you to look a little farther into the possibilities of the ditch.
And I was gonna say just a minute or two ago.
Something in the timeframe, I know that's hard to do, but see what you can do.
If we, if we discover that moving a ditch is gonna be $54,001 or more, we still do have a bridge alternative that we did look at a few months ago.
And in the, in the, in the document we sent to the state, was it specified that it's a steel bridge or was it specified just as a bridge? And if so, is it possible to put a culvert bridge like we had talked about instead of? It depends on how you presented it, whether we could do a different alternative. And I think a culvert bridge would be just fine. And I think we can get in and out of that for $15,000, $20,000 at the tops. What do you think, John? Culvert would probably be $10,000, I would guess, set size.
But they have to do the water studies, things like that for, you know, for capacity regions, or re-top.
But I'd like to pursue that option also if.
And Jason Benwright's been really good to work with historically. He's been really good about guidance on these kinds of things.
Is the water flow, that type of thing, that something you consult the DNR on?
No, usually the county does that or the.
County engineer would be normally the one that, yeah. He would determine.
Possibly throughout your other investigations, that can be brought up and see what kind of option that is as well.
I know when we, when we replace a culvert by the ditches, ordinarily, we just bring it in and the county okay's it because of the existing structure replacing. This would be a new structure, but if we aren't impeding the water flow, that would be the only requirement they would need is to not impede or obstruct the flow of water. As long as our.
Yeah, as long as the culvert is the same size as the ditch, you're not.
So I'd like to pursue that also.
I can't promise you I'll have a full report in two weeks, but I'll plug away. I'm not really sure how long it'll take to.
We run out of options, we run out of options. But we're, at least we can be a little creative. Thank you. We don't need a motion for any of that, do we?
No.
Just motion to have me investigate the ditch, I would say.
We do need a motion for that, Jason?
I move for that.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We have fire department payroll project?
All right, so we have one item under old and one item under new for Chief Santo.
Okay, we're requesting some clarification on the payroll. How when payroll stops and starts, I guess is what we're looking for. A little history on this. John's probably the one that was on the council prime before Melissa's tenure, I believe. And we okayed for, out on a call longer than two hours, we switch over to a minimum wage. Otherwise, we get a stipend per call. At that point in time, we're clear of the scene. Just because we're clear of the scene doesn't mean we're done. We have to get our hoses cleaned, airbags cleaned, trucks ready to go for the next call. Our constitutional and, constitution and policy state.
Uh, no, I don't.
This is the minutes from the 2018 meeting.
Okay. I'll give you a copy of these one of the states here. This is fighting the UBS, but this is the highlighted part here is when the, we determine the end of our call, I guess. This dates, which makes perfect sense to me, is when we clear the scene or cleared from the call. Clear from the call to me is when we're back in service and everything ready to go for the next call. This comes into effect very few times a year. They were out more than two hours anyway. I don't think this would be a huge undertaking of my budget to make this happen, but a few times it does take effect. I think we need to pay our guys for staying there cleaning hoses up and getting everything back. I don't think we should, you know, we cleared scene and drive back and get everything cleaned. It can take an hour or two sometimes. Not very often, but it does. I guess I'm looking for clarification on if we wanna go with clearing from the scene or cleared from the call by the officer in charge.
And if I could just clarify one thing, when the council did discuss this in 2018, the minutes here on the screen it says time of dispatch to clearing the scene or leaving the call. And when I had discussed leaving the call back at that meeting, I simply meant if I'm leaving the call earlier because I have to get back to work or something, then that's, that's my end time. I mean, people could be out there for three more hours, but if I had to leave early. So that's kinda what, that personally, that's what my intention was when I said leaving the call at that meeting.
I've always just understood any job, anywhere, to be, when you're working, you're paid and when you're done working, you're not. Are we working without pay?
Early, yes, we're playing up.
Then I wanna change that, so.
Are we gonna have a time limit then for, you know, example, up to an hour and a half, up to?
Would there be a standard time, Mike?
I don't, I hate to put it, I mean, some calls it doesn't take much cleanup, some calls take a lot more. I think the officer in charge, which most of the time would be me or one of my other officers, I think if I can't trust the other officers to put the time down that we're done and, you know, we're done cleaning now and getting everything ready to, we're sitting around BS and mark that time down right. I think we probably need different officers if we can't trust them for that.
I trust we have responsible adults working in the fire department if we're trusting them to put fires out and, right? So we should be able to trust them to clock out properly, I think.
I trust my officers.
Yeah.
I just want guidance, the way it reads, enjoy the way.
And does the council have anything? You reviewed the memo here that I put out, three items to look at, one identifying what end time is. I think we're addressing them right now. Do you wanna talk about them any further or?
Are we reading too far into these words, Jason, or? Yeah. Yeah. I mean.
This only goes into effect after we've crossed the two-hour maximum. We get our stipend for the first two hours. And originally, we put that in place because we got some of the, some employers will pay their employees to leave, some won't. So if you're not, your employer doesn't pay you, you're gone for all day. At least get something for it. That's why we initially put that.
It just seems so bizarre to me. I mean, I worked in a nursing home for the longest time. Like if I pick someone off the floor, do I just put them in the wheelchair and walk away because I didn't get them, everything cleaned up in time? Like I just, you know, we should, I don't know, I think we're looking too far into this. You should get paid if you're working. When you're done, you're done. When you're done, you're done.
When you're talking, no, but you're not talking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, the last, within the last month, we've had a few mutual aids, like Mike was saying. If we did this increase to the end of, when the units were available for the next call, we would add 20, and then the other one was 35 bucks on to the payroll.
We're not talking big amounts, I'm honest.
Pretty minimal. But I. I would move from this point forward, we pay until, however you want to word it, till the call is over, till everything's back online, however you'd like to word it.
I would recommend the council word it, though, because we did talk about it three years ago and we're back at it.
I would, I would word it as when everything is back online. Can we bring it in for the next meeting for approval? Because we don't have the, the wording, verbiage down.
Oh, sure.
Just know that we put together some kind of verbiage, bring it in to the next meeting, make it retroactive to now, or first of the year.
First of the year.
Put it in writing?
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
I would, I would move to table this thing.
Yeah.
Bring it back next meeting with the correct verbiage and the correct language, and then we can approve it at that point.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jason, it looked like you were making note of it there, you'll.
We'll, we'll get it right.
Okay.
One more thing.
Yes?
I know your policy on, uh, getting somebody to the, be on the agenda, I don't like the idea that department heads have to fill out the same deal if they have something to discuss with you guys and wait multiple meetings to get on.
Okay.
Just let, give you my opinion on that. I think if something happens, I blew up one of my trucks or something.
Yep.
I don't want to talk to you right away.
I would certainly say we've, we've tried to express to the department heads, especially with now we're stretching their time in between the scene. If they need something, come to us in the meantime, so if you need something.
Well, you could dress that with emergency meeting, too.
Yeah, I, I agree with you 100%, I can, can ask one, or whatever. It's a major, but I just don't think that department heads should fill out the same, they have something to discuss with you.
Yeah, I mean, whether you want to fill it or not, I think that's up to you, but you'll be able to discuss during our department head time, whether it's your scheduled night or not.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Oh, you're on it. We got one more. Yeah, you're next.
Yeah, you're next.
New number one.
We, uh, made a offer to hire, can I say her name in open meeting?
Yep.
Uh, my head.
Brooke Klein.
Klein. Um, uh, lives in town here, uh, we made an offer, she, uh, we had our open house after a dance we had, and she showed up and showed interest, went through the background checks, interviews, um, thinks she'll be a good fit for us. Um, pending your guys' approval that we offered her position, I guess.
I would move we, uh, approve the new hire. You guys did the legwork. Honor it, it's good enough for me.
That's good, because she's already responded to calls.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Did you second?
What's that?
John did.
John did.
John.
Okay. Redistrict, redist, redistrict.
All right. Um, obviously, we have had redistricting with our legislative branches after the, the last census, so tonight's resolution, we need to adopt and then we'll give it back to the county auditor. It basically states that we are no longer in 23B, we are now in 19A, Minnesota Legislative District 19A. Since we do not have wards or precincts within the city of Janesville, we do not have to do any changes with that. Obviously, our borders did not change. So the resolution basically states we are in 19A and we're still located at the same spot for our elections.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I was just going to add that you probably have heard, but there will be a special primary election on May 24th for Congressman Haghorn's seat.
Oh, I know.
And we're contacting election judges right now, we're getting the list. Even though it's a special primary, which may have very little turnout, we still need to have those number of judges there, so.
Encourage everybody to vote.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.